Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's study session. It's six o'clock and we'll get started here. So first up on the agenda is a discussion relating to the SunCorridor MPO, planning area regional transportation plan. Mr. Dwayne?
I'm Mayor, council members. The SunCorridor MPO every four years needs to do a regional transportation plan. It's been four years ago that we did the last one, so we're in the process of doing another one. So with me tonight are Irene Higgs from the SunCorridor MPO, Jason Haftner from SunCorridor MPO, and Brent Crowder from Kimley Horn. And Brent's gonna be doing all the talking. So Brent, you're up.
I hired Gunner.
Thank you for allowing us to come and report on our progress for the SunCorridor MPO Regional Transportation Plan. Just as a background on what is a regional transportation plan, it is a 20-year blueprint. It's a federal requirement. The SunCorridor MPO is required to prepare their regional transportation plan and update the plan every four years. Some of the key elements of the plan is that it is fiscally constrained. It does make an assessment of what is the available funding over the next 20 years and then identify what are those key critical needs that should be funded and can be funded with that available federal funds. It's important to emphasize that it does not replace all the other transportation planning that does occur within the agencies and the jurisdictions. There still is a need of a city transportation plan, a transit plan, a bicycle pedestrian plan, et cetera. This is, consider it this the overall document that those other plans fold up into. As I just mentioned, a little bit ahead of myself on this slide, but it, all those other jurisdictions' plans are, feed this regional transportation plan. So what is contained within the SunCorridor MPO RTP? We have prepared the first eight chapters of this document. We began our study last November or so, and we will be completing with final signature in March of 2020. So we, in reality, we're about 80% done and nearing the final steps and making an effort to reach out and inform the different agencies and jurisdictions of our progress. And we will be saluted public meeting in December and then going to the SunCorridor MPO Executive Board for final signature by March 16th, 2020. So this slide here identifies those chapters which we have completed already and we will begin, we will review each of those briefly here this evening. Some of the community outreach that we have completed to date, we began with Technical Advisory Committee that is comprised of representatives of each of the MPO member agencies. We held a survey, an electronic survey that was distributed in early, or at the end of 2018 for input on what are those key issues that are most concerned within the MPO area. That, next, we held a presentation to the SunCorridor MPO Executive Board in May of 2019. We are now reaching out to each of you as well as those of other cities within the MPO area and the County Board of Supervisors. We will bring this information out to a public hearing in January of 2020 in advance of final signature. Chapter three reviews goals and objectives from the, establishes goals and objectives within the regional transportation plan. The goals and objectives are consistent with those requirements defined federally within the FAST Act as well as ADOT Long Range Transportation Plan. The SunCorridor MPO adopted those same goals and performance measures by, and we are therefore consistent with ADOT Long Range Transportation Plan. This, some of the specific goals and objectives that are within the RTP are roadway and bridge information, which is collectively called infrastructure condition. We report on safety, crash history, which is informed by the recently completed SunCorridor MPO Traffic Safety Plan, as well as that completed for Penale County. We report on system reliability, freight movement, and economic vitality. We compile available transit performance data and then report on environmental sustainability. To give you an example of some of the information that is in there, this slide here presents pavement data, system preservation. You can see there, within Casa Grande in 2015, we collected pavement condition data from each of the jurisdictions. And in Casa Grande, they were reported at 82% in good condition. And based on the most current data, we have 84.6% in good condition. You can see in comparison to many of the other jurisdictions, you, the roadway condition within the city is in very, very good condition, very high percentage. Overall, within the SunCorridor MPO, it's a much different case. There is decades of pavement needs that are not able to be addressed with the available And it's a, it's a, it's a big problem throughout, throughout the county. Chapter four focuses on economic development and transportation. One of the primary emphasis, emphases within the RTP is to identify investments to key corridors or locations to promote that economic development and support jobs and employment within the county and within the MPO area. We met with each of the representatives of the jurisdictions that are focused on economic development and got their input on where are those primary anticipated employment and population centers over the next 20 years and with, with the intent to identify where do we focus, where are those key critical needs. Identified many of those planned trends, planned employment centers that are within the city of Casa Grande. You can see here on the, the slide on the left projects population growth over the next 20 years. We're, within the MPO area, we're about 127,000 population and over the next 20 years projected to grow to 284,960. The slide on, the graph on the right has employment data. We're at about 32,000, projected to, to increase to just about 90,000 within the 20-year planning horizon of 2040. Chapter six delves into additional detail about the transportation system and condition, including traffic volumes, projected, current and future, the roadway performance data related to the level of service and pavement and bridge condition. It reports on safety and crash information and then incorporates the new functional classification, which was recently updated by ADOT. It also identifies key freight networks as well as bridge condition. Transit reports on, on available transit ridership and the service hours that are provided. And then we have a section on new bicycle and pedestrian projects that have been recently completed and planned within the SunCorridor MPO. We also incorporate the available airport and aviation data. One of the maps that's included within the document relates to level of service. This here, level of service is a, is a grade scale from A to F on the level of congestion that is both current and projected within the MPO area. You can see there is a lot of green, but you also see, if you could do, delve, dive into a little bit more detail on this map, there are pockets of congested roadways that do need improvement. For example, by 2040, Sunshine Boulevard, Bataglia Road, segments of Toltec, 11 Mile Corner, Penale Air Park, Cripple Creek Road, Red Rock Road, Camino Correo, Sasko Road, and Cochway Road, and Sasko are all projected to be what we call Level of Service F, which means they, they knew, they do need capacity improvements to accommodate the future population and employment data. Chapter seven addresses best practices, things like access management. Access management relates to maintaining road system to provide both mobility for your major arterials and then access to local businesses for, for collectors and, and local streets. It's important to have proper access management to maintain the function, to maintain smoothness of traffic flow. It also improves safety when we have adequate access management. There is a section on complete streets. Complete streets relates to improving our roadways to accommodate all users, bicyclists, pedestrians, transit, motor vehicles, and transit. As the region continues to evolve and grow and urbanize, those alternate modes, other modes of transportation will become increasingly important. We make recommendations on, on types of bicycle and pedestrian facilities. Shared use paths are the most prevalent or common, common anticipated type of projects where used by both pedestrians and bicyclists for recreation and for transportation. We introduce a concept of travel demand management as we anticipate some major employers within the region, some of the, the large factories and manufacturing facilities that are in the works. A travel demand management will be important to make sure that all the employees are not traveling to that corridor, to that, to that location all at the same time and resulting in that focused traffic congestion. But travel demand management can, can encourage things such as carpooling, vanpooling, or staggered work hours to reduce that peak loading on our transportation system. Over the next 20 years, technology will become increasingly important. We're, we're in a little bit of a sea change with transportation, autonomous vehicles, connected vehicles and what the technology will be. There's projections that before we start to reduce traffic volumes on our roads, that we're going to increase as we have mixed traffic streams, as we have both autonomous vehicles and regular vehicles over the next transition period, over the next 40 years or so. And so that will be something to begin to think about. How do we accommodate the, the different technology that, that will begin to shape our infrastructure? We make recommendations with, with regard to pavement management. You can, as, as we saw earlier, road, pavement condition in Casa Grande is, is excellent. You do a great job here. Elsewhere within the county, it's, it's a different story. But also you have some automated resources to assess your condition where some of the count, the other jurisdictions are done manually and objectively. And it makes it difficult to be consistent evaluation of what type of condition our pavement is in. And so we make recommendations for trying to make that more consistent across the county to objectively assess needs throughout the county. The, the SunCorridor MPO and Penale County are in the process of initiating a regional transit governance study. So we will refer to the outcome of that study, how transit is, is managed cooperatively as, as it, as it is expanded into other areas of the county. So we don't make specific recommendations with, within our study, but we'll, we'll defer to that study and the recommendations from that as it is completed. And the last thing is focusing on truck routes. As these manufacturing facilities become, as they develop, access to them, both in, in the width of the road, the turn radiuses of the intersection, so they can adequately make those turns in the pavement section. The lane width, et cetera, needs to be clearly identified so those roads can, can adequately accommodate safely and conveniently. Chapter eight is what we call our implementation chapter. It makes an assessment of the available funding anticipated over the next 20 years through federal sources, primarily Community Development Block Grant Program as well as Highway Safety Improvement Program. Because of the, the large backlog of needs and the relatively small amount of funding that is available, the SunCorridor MPO Technical Advisory Committee has elected not to identify a 20-year list of projects because it's just a drop in the bucket. Instead, we've identified a relative percentage of funds, federal funds through the CDBG and the HSIP that should be allocated to different investment categories, which are preservation, which is pavement and bridge, maintaining our infrastructure in good condition. Second is modernization, that is improving our infrastructure. It's with either technology or safety improvements. Or the last is expansion, which is additional lanes or roadway widening. Should be noted that the SunCorridor MPO has been very successful over the past few years in obtaining funding from the, through the HSIP program, the Highway Safety Improvement Program. Those projects are categorized as modernization projects. And so you'll see here on this slide that over the past several years, because of successful grant applications, the SunCorridor MPO has about $6.8 million in HSIP funds that are programmed. That program has shifted to a performance-based system where projects are evaluated statewide and there is no guaranteed funding to this SunCorridor MPO. And so within our projected, over the next 20 years, we have not made those assumptions that we will continue to receive that same level, but we have full confidence that, that the, the staff, the SunCorridor MPO staff and their teams will continue to identify specific HSIP projects and be successful in receiving funding for those. You can see there on the left, the ST, Surface Transportation Block Grant Program allocates through the, in the, within the past, in, in the current tip, the 20 to 25, programmed out just under $3.5 million. And then going forward, that is at $2.9 million. That, that is not to be construed, that funding is decreasing, but it's a result of their using, loans. Easy word, right? Loans to, to build up funding so they can focus those on, on larger projects. They work with the MPOs to consolidate that funding to, to become more efficient with the funds that they do have. And then total funding over the, the next 20-year program, you can see is about $12.2 million in that STBG program, which is a very small amount in relation to the needs. Recognize the, the significant needs there are and the relatively very small amount of federal funding that is available to address those needs. Chapter eight is a summary of what are some of those most critical projects and needs. Again, we have not identified every single project that could be constructed and implemented over the next 20 years, but focusing this chapter more on what are those primary critical needs. Things like the, the north-south corridor, the east-west corridor, new interchanges within the, within the city and the jurisdictions. ADOT is currently initiating the I-10 widening study to complete the widening between Casa Grande and, and the Phoenix metro area. Those are identified with the anticipation that as funding through grants and other funding sources become available, the SunCorridor MPO RTP can, can provide that additional support and resource to pursue those grant opportunities.
Underlying.
I mentioned some of those strategic projects, others that I didn't mention, I-11 and the Phoenix-Tucson Passenger Rail Study. Next steps within our process are completing presentations to the other agencies and jurisdictions through the rest of the month of August and into September. We will have the, the draft document ready for review in November. That will be held for public review, a 30-day public review period in January, and then the final RTP at the end of January, early February for anticipated adoption by the SunCorridor, SunCorridor MPO Executive Board by March 10th, 2020. Are there any questions related to the project or the process?
The north-south roadway that's being litigated, is that figured in at all or is that just, are you depending on it or?
You're talking about the north-south corridor study?
Yes.
So we have identified it within our project. We have identified within our modelings that are anticipated to be completed within the next 20 years and, and our, and our modeling does reflect that, those improvements that are most likely. The draft EIS for that north-south corridor study is anticipated to be released in September next month after many, many years of, of study and evaluation. So looking forward to a little bit more certainty on the status of that. I think you're also referring to the, the status of the RTA funding to implement that. And so we have made provision for that, recognize that, that the uncertain status of that and that that is yet to be resolved. But working through those, our technical advisory committee have identified and working with MAG, what do we, are, looking at our crystal ball, what are the portions of that that are most likely to be implemented within the, the 20-year horizon?
Secondly, the population estimates. We had gone through that with the growth tsunami when it was coming and, and they highly overestimated the amount of people that would be here. And a lot of the major companies looked and said, well, we're supposed to be 100,000 by right now instead of being 60. We need to get down there and get our roots in the ground. And, and we ended up being overserved in a lot of areas, which is discouraging to people in the community when they see a store leave. Thankfully, we have too many of that type of store here. So hope they're very careful about how they, how they handle that as, as far as attracting. We want new ones to come in, but we also want them to understand closely what the actual population is and what the growth percentages are as we go forward.
Yeah, that was a, a common issue statewide over the past decade, and you'll see the new projections are much more conservative and, and realistic, grounded than they, than they were being projected 10, 12 years ago.
Mary?
So anything with transit, when you talk about transit and that, that's regionally rather than locally like within. So we have a transit plan we're working on. Is that something you're going to fold into yours?
Yes, we have recognized that, that transit plan and acknowledged that within our document. And the recommendations from that transit, recognize that the city does have about a million that currently is not being applied to transit that they receive through the 5307 program. And so making, making note of that. And then as the regional transit governance study is completed, as decisions are made to implement those, we're identifying those opportunities to, to, going forward.
I want to piggyback because that's the question that I had, is how, as you put this plan together, I would imagine you use the 2016 plan as a baseline and then maybe build on that, but let me know if that's right. And do you, like, you know, transit or the pavement management system, do you get with the individual cities then and make sure there's consistency in the data that we have and what you have? And how does that work as you're collecting all the data?
Yeah, that's correct. So we did meet with each of the individual, individual agencies and jurisdictions. We got with Dwayne and his team to get pavement data. We met with the city of Eloy, spent a couple of months working with them to collect their payment data as well as Coolidge and Penale County. So, so really, and, and providing them guidelines. So we are being as consistent as possible, but recognizing the city has an automated system that's professionally collected every few years, whereas the other jurisdictions, they're more on a subjective. So it, it does introduce a little bit of uncertainty there, but I think as we've gone through, this set of data is improved over the data that we had in 2015. And I anticipate as we mature as a region, then that will continue to, to be the case that each time we go through this, we look at our data and as we compare it to our baseline, we can see how we can improve on that, that data collection.
Thank you.
Does the overpasses and underpasses and that type of thing, does ADOT have any more money available than they have in the past for interchanges? They kind of leave it up to the community to, to try to come up with the money or get a, get somebody that's going to use it to, to pre-fund it. But with growth comes the need for more of them and it's, it's, some of the rules as far as what you do with money that's, impact money and that type of thing is typically, you lose if you don't use it, so.
Yeah, I'm not speaking for ADOT. I do know that there are, there are needs statewide. Any capacity-type project must compete for funding statewide, and there are very, very few capacity projects within the program. And so most of those projects are funded either through regional funds, MAG, the XI Sales Tax, and the, and the PAG region is funded through their local sales tax. If, once the Penale County RTA is up and running, capacity improvements would be funded through that. And so ADOT has very, very little money to be doing significant expansion projects across.
I think they're, I think they're 100% preservation, aren't they?
I, there may be one, you know, because of they received some, some grants down like, for example, Mariposa Port of Entry down in Nogales, et cetera, or capacity projects, but those are external funding sources that they've been able to identify.
A lot of this is new to me, so I apologize for some, a couple of pretty basic questions. But the map that, that you show, the SEMPO region, is that just one region that you look at or, or that's not the extent of your responsibility, is it?
So the map that you do see, the SunCorridor MPO is limited to boundary that you see.
Okay. And, and my other question is, what is your relationship to the central Arizona governments? How, how do you work with them to accomplish projects and?
Yeah, so I may turn it over to Irene or Jason to address that, but CAG has a different geographic area that they are responsible for. And the MPO is a requirement to establish an MPO when you get to a certain population threshold.
Okay.
And, and the SunCorridor MPO was created in 2014, based on the 2010 census, and it was carved out of the, the CAG area.
Okay.
And CAG continues to administer programs for areas outside of the MPO within Gila County and, and parts of Penale County.
Okay. All right, thank you. Yeah, it, it should be noted that, that the SEMPO is really is Coolidge, Eloy, Casa Grande, and Penale County. Those are the four, four government entities that, that make up SEMPO.
Yeah, so we're essentially a planning agency for transportation funds. CAG does a similar set of things as well, but just for a different geographic region.
And they deal with also CDBG funds, which is federal housing funds. So they deal with other stuff that the MPO doesn't deal with. Okay.
So the state, the whole state is broken up into different, what are called COGS and MPOs. The MPOs are based on urban areas over a population of 50,000. And then the rest of the state is kind of covered by the COGS, the ones that aren't urbanized.
Okay.
In some cases, the COGS and MPOs work very closely together. For example, we work with CAG for mobility management and some other services. Casa Grande gets some services from CAG because MPOs are generally primarily transportation-focused only versus the COGS do some other human resource elements and things of that nature.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Is MAG involved very much in your planning?
MAG is involved very much in our plan. MAG does a lot of the modeling.
And why is that when we're in Penale County?
Well, MAG does a lot of services that are provided to all the COGS and MPOs throughout the state. And because. the state, and because they do that, a lot of times, there's no reason for the other COGS and MPOs to do the same work. For example, Suncorridor MPO is a staff of two people, and MAG has about 120 staff, so they have a little bit more resources to do some of the things, and we just piggyback on a lot of the things.
Are they doing the planning, or is it going through you?
It goes through the MPO.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Yes, the planning for our area, is it, is MAG planning it, or is the group that we have planning?
The Suncorridor MPO does the planning for transportation for the region. We just get some of our information from MAG.
Okay.
They have some tools that we use.
That's right.
I'll just give you a brief example. We use what we call a travel demand model. It's a fairly complex tool, it doesn't care where the city boundary is, you know, travel sheds, et cetera, and so MAG has a model that incorporates much outside of their boundaries, because so many people are commuting to and from outside of MAG into MAG, and so it wouldn't make sense to cut that model off at the Maricopa County boundary. So because that model does incorporate much wider area, we work with MAG on the modeling. It's one model, it's consistent, and that we are able to make sound decisions that make sense both for Casa Grande and the Suncorridor MPO and MAG. Consistent data is the most important thing. Thank you.
And just also, just for identification, for the council, each mayor of the city and county supervisor on the board, right, so I'm on the board of the SC MPO.
Okay.
And so is like Steve Miller, and then the mayors of each of the cities, so we all work really closely together on the plan, so it works good, works well, and Irene and Jason do a great job, they really do, so. I do want to make one, well, maybe two statements. One, don't forget about pedestrian and bicycle paths.
It was on there, I made sure.
I know, I saw it on there.
Yeah, I saw it.
But we need to do something with it. That's what I want to see us do, something with it.
Combined with your question.
We can use, we can use state highway access, we can also use federal highway access. I've seen it all over the country, I've seen it in Colorado, I've seen it in Utah, they run along state highways, they run along interstates. So if they can do it, I know we can do it. Also, making sure that, you know, we get, we get some sort of a, I know we have a plan, so let's start to implement it. Like, there's some things we can do as a city, there's some equipment we have as the city, that, you know, I think we can use to make those bike paths, so, and I want to put a little more concentrated effort on that. I know Matt, Matt's on top of that, so let's do that. Also, I wanted to, I did have a question, sorry.
Big Matt.
Do we know what the status is, or have you heard any more on the FAST Act? The $287 billion, is there any update on that?
Expires next year.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about the new one, that starts in 2020, or 2021.
Last I heard, they had something that had, they had agreed upon in the Senate, but it hasn't been made public or actually gone through any committees, and has not been looked at by the House.
Is there any pressure we can put on them to look at it?
Right, your Congress.
Can we get maybe some information to communicate?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from anyone?
Answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you to SC MPO, Jason, Irene, Duane, also, thank you for everything you guys do. Next is the proposed ordinance amendment, maximum building height.
Thanks, Mayor. Joe Horn will be making this presentation this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'll be presenting a code text amendment modifying the maximum height in our industrial zone districts. So throughout the past couple of years, the city's put a great effort into attracting new industrial development. A common question that comes up during those meetings is the maximum allowed height within the industrial districts. So this code text amendment will assist in attracting industrial users. It's also intended to ensure that we're, the city of Casa Grande is pursuing the best planning practices, hence providing the city with an advantage when competing with communities in the region and throughout the country, potentially adding to and enhancing the strong economic base that the city of Casa Grande's already created. So within the I-1 Zone District, which is our garden and light industrial district, we're proposing to bring the maximum height from 35 feet up to 45 feet. And then when looking at the I-2, which is our general industrial district, we're proposing from, change from 55 feet up to 60 feet, with an additional building height up to 75 feet, meeting certain development standards, and I'll get into those standards in a bit. So the reasons for limiting height in the past is partly attributed to fire protection. So Casa Grande now has the ability to go up to 100 feet with, 100 feet with their new aerial equipment. And then also, the building code and fire code now requires any building over 5,000 square feet to provide sprinkler systems and alarm systems. The other reason for limiting height is the community character, which is a statics, bulk and scale compatibility with surrounding uses. And thinking about that, part of the reason that we added additional building and site design requirements to the I-2 height bonus is to counteract those negative effects. So the first one we added was the increased building setbacks, an additional three feet for every one foot of height exceeding that 60 feet. Second one is we increased that street frontage landscape to increase that buffer. We're also doubling the landscape that's required within that buffer at our current setback. The third one is the building, its app, a pertinent is, shall be designed, constructed, and or colored in order to correspond with the aesthetic view shed and other characteristics of the area, so they won't look out of place. Another reason we're confident that it won't affect that compatibility with surrounding use is we've done a really good job, and we're going to increase to do this job with our general plan that we're working on now, is creating that industrial corridor, so we're, all our industrials grouped into one area, so we're really not burdening other zone districts or other uses. So you can see kind of our planned industrial corridor shown there. Examples of some of the buildings that we think fit, that would be more than 35 feet in our I-zone, I-1 Zone District are shown here. So these are all taller than that 35 feet, but less than the 45 feet. And then we also provided some I-2 examples that would exceed that 55 feet. So that's the kind of development we're hoping to get with this increased height. There are still height exceptions within our code that we've used in the past, specifically for elevators, stair penhouse, water tanks, monitors, and then towers and monuments, silos, grain elevators, and anything that's required for the manufacturing process. So that's staying in the code. Previous granted height exceptions or variants that we've seen throughout the city, as you can see Abbott Labs, the Walmart, Airman's Dairy, and Frito-Lay. The next step for us is Planning Commission. We're scheduled to go September 5th to the Planning Commission with this, and then you'll see it again for a vote on September 16th. Do we have any questions, concerns?
Mr. Powell? The, the building heights in the utility, the two, where you have the, a lot of times the heavier manufacturing and that type of thing, is the building heights allow them functionally to do more, or is it more for the impression that it creates when they do it?
Could you rephrase that? I'm not quite sure.
I'm just wondering, is, is adding to the height of the building allow them to get more things done
Yes.
on that particular site, or is it just basically to try to get up there and be noticed?
No, no, our, our goal is to practice the best planning practice that we can. A lot of industrial users will come in, ask us our building height, and we, we're anticipating there would all be usable space, so it'd add extra floors, extra uses, extra, extra ability to do more with that space. So that's our real goal, and going up to 75 feet and then pulling it back farther away from other property lines gives us the ability to go even a little bit higher. We do think it will provide a good advantage when, when looking for industrial development to come to the city.
Paul, we've been through some of that already with the ones that, we had the homes and the industry too close together. The same type of plan was used then on having them set back so far, and I guess one of the things that concerns me, and we're talking about ambiance and whatever, hopefully these will be grouped in an organized manner instead of just popping up in different places around town.
Back to the zoning graphic.
So you've got certain districts that are, that are zoned for that and some that aren't.
Right, so, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Powell, so as Joe mentioned, you know, from a compatibility of land use aspect, we don't really have a lot of concerns, because much of our industrial area is very much grouped together, right? Obviously, there are points where it's going to bump up against some residential or other uses, but in general, it's, it's, most of these buildings will be internal and adjacent to other industrial users. But given if they are up against other properties that might be residential, we do have increased setbacks and increased landscape standards here, and we can oppose additional standards through the site plan review process if those are really necessary to ensure compatibility. Because remember, each of these buildings goes through a separate planning commission, public hearing process with public outreach and stakeholder review. So none of this is done in a vacuum, so it's all a public process.
Good.
Bob?
I want to compliment you for being proactive and looking for these issues that intimidate or slow down an industrial prospect. If you know going, going into this that height, building height is an issue, I think it's great that you're reaching out and increasing those numbers. I think we, we need to be known as a positive community for industrial prospects, and if these little, little movements help that, as long as we stay within the realm of best practices, I think it's great. My compliments.
Well, thank you.
And I just, you know, I meant the same as Bob. The only concern that I, with the increased landscaping, with, you know, as Mr. Powell always educates us about the water usage and things like that, I think that that's the only thing that, you know, that I heard that people were a little
Interperication.
concerned about, but we're all right, so, good job.
Matt?
Kind of echo everything, but the biggest concern was where they're going to be, because we did have that issue before, and you guys did a great job with that, and with the increased setbacks, that's the key to the whole thing. So again, for being proactive and not to belaborate, good job. Thank you.
And this puts people on notice. Now, as we do these and that, now we, and can you put that arrow up where you had that corridor, the orange arrow across? There we go. And that, and so as we have this, and as, as developers come in and say they're looking at housing or whatever, well, they're now aware, this is here. Now we're making that as public knowledge and that, and again, because we do have it in the corridor, and I want to echo too, is the idea that this is, you know, very forward-thinking, we need to be doing this. When people come to our town, and we can be able to say, oh, well, we're looking at this, we seriously considered it, and that, it would leave an impression that I believe we want to leave.
Any other comments, questions?
I just would add, I think we've done a really good job thus far with industry coming in, and, so the one question that looms is water, as far as the ones that come in, and I know Chandler, right now, does not have enough water for all the new ones, and they tell you, we can give you this much water, but you have to bring the rest with you to be in Chandler. And if we start getting high demand for water, we may have to look at something like that.
Well, that is something we're certainly going to look at with our new general plan update, that very issue.
Purple Water Plan. Okay. No other questions, thank you, gentlemen. We'll stand recessed until 7 o'clock.
It's a good one today.